Do you know who authorized Whittington to send that letter if it was sent to the Genesee County Treasurer as it relates to the other important business?
That's not germane to the motion.
Oh, it is to me.
That is not germane to the motion.
I'm gonna appeal you and you ain't got the votes to sustain it.
Mr. Mays.
You might need to give me some latitude.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, Ms. Burkenrow.
Okay, just because you have the votes to win an appeal does not mean that you cannot be germane in the middle of a discussion.
Let me say this, it's relevant for...
Mr. Mays, I'm not finished.
Point of order.
I'm not finished.
Point of order.
I will entertain your point of order when you let me finish.
When I say point of order, you stop talking or you remove this chair. You shall be.
Point of information.
So I'm on a point of order. You can leave. I'll say, "Alhamdulillah." Goodbye to you. Amen. She didn't want to stop talking when I called a point of order. Now, if Ms. Priestley gonna chair, we can proceed. If Ms. Priestley ain't gonna chair, we can leave and go home. I couldn't care less what she did. She gonna entertain a point of order or she can take her marbles and go home. And if she keep talking, she shall remove herself on a point of order. Man, no, I wouldn't baby her. So Ms. Priestley, I'm gonna try to continue.
Please stay germane to the question.
I am, but my vote.
No, sir, to the discussion I hear.
Okay, well, you lead too. But my position is this.
Ms. Johnson or Ms. Donoghue, do you have a difference? Because I'm in the second round. Ms. Mays has spoken twice on this one. I'm chair and I'm saying it's the second round. Mays spoke twice on this already.
Point of order.
He's agreeing.
Point of order.
What is your point? Do you have a problem with Mr. Mays saying he's spoken twice on this one?
If you would be quiet, you could hear my point of order.
Please proceed. I waited and you just stared at me.
Thank you. No, I didn't. You know what? I'm so not gonna do this with you because you were the reason why someone sent me emails that they wanna hang me. Now, what I'd like to see is...
Ms. Burns, I don't know what you're referring, but that's totally inappropriate.
But point of order.
Stay to the...
Excuse me, you're gonna stop talking when I say point of order. Thank you. My point of order is if we could get clarity from the clerk or Janelle, which you asked for.
They do not have clarity.
Thank you.
Your apology is accepted.
I didn't offer you one.
Anyone else wanna speak in the second round? All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I'm gonna put some fire up under folks. Look at that. We discussing multimillion dollar opera funds with a three-minute clock. I ain't never seen this in 20, 30 years of council, but these geniuses set that up. I'm not the only one seeing it. Stevie won there, everybody can see it. I'm getting calls. And I'll be voting no that you can sit as a chair and not order this without objections to wait to see if there's a resolution. We're wasting a lot of time with this different treatment and nonsense. Or, if I was to be courteous, I wait till Mr. Murphy quit talking.
Point of order.
What's your point, Ms. Priestley?
The rules state that all cell phones should be silenced when coming into meetings.
You are correct. So, Mr. Mays, please silence your cell phone and also other council members make sure your cell phones are on silence, please.
It's gonna silence itself because the battery low, but I will try to silence it. Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
In the second round, I'm gonna say this real quick. If I see a crook, I'm gonna call him a crook. And if I tell you something and say it, you can take it to the bank. You can take it to the bank. Mr. Murphy can try to protect the city attorney and anybody else he want. Hell, his literature was illegal. Crooked. Go over to the jail telling them that I was a self-proclaimed... He say he's self-proclaimed dope dealer in the past. You can grow up to be like me. Crooked.
Councilman Burns.
It's Councilwoman Burns.
Councilwoman Burns. And all due respect, all I'm asking you as the chairperson is to be fair with us. And when you hear people calling us out and mistreating us, I'm asking you to rule on them. And that's all I'm asking you to do.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Through you to Mr. Murphy, when you mistreat these residents and, in my opinion, maybe help cover something up, do you want me to be fair with you?
Madam Chair.
Even the other night, when the so-called Robert Jones was saying what he said about me, I might need some D or P, Councilwoman Galloway spoke up, but she was speaking up on behalf of what she said, that the children might be here, just like they might be here in her. But as far as Sweet T. Robert Davis is concerned, that D stands for you with your sugary self. And as far as Eric Mays is concerned, as long as you keep traveling in the past...
Point of order. Madam Chair.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
She can address the council, but now she want us to speak up on other people. Now she calling people names and saying initials, so she ain't no better than some of the stuff she talking about. And my point of order is you got a duty to check her, put her back in line, or mute her. Bottom line.
Ms. Moore, could I ask you, please, to watch your language?
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
I will. I will. I was just making that comparison because when he said it pertaining to me, did you say anything, Councilwoman Mays? No. And like I told you, I will defend myself. And him talking about the D standing for drinking, we know what he was saying, you know? And I'm gonna defend me. And I know you don't like what I'm saying. You know, as I've been on his call, my brother called, he heard your voice, he started talking about you and the dealings that he had with you on the street. Because my brother is off into drugs and drinking and being in the same settings with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next speaker, please.
Point of information, Ms. Fields.
What is your point of information?
I ain't off into no drugs, drug dealing, nothing. You gonna let her make these idiotic personal attacks and say nothing? It's against our rules. You can enjoy it, but guess what? It's against the rules. I thought you was a stickler. Now come on, let's get this together. Thank you.
Mr. Mays, many speakers have gone beyond the parameters of what I would like to allow.
They wouldn't be doing it under my watch. That's under your watch and bias. Point of information, I just asked a quick point. If you addressing it that many can do it so she can too, I disagree with you. You chair this meeting.
Mr. Mays, you wanna ask a point of information, but when I try to answer you, you don't want to allow me to answer.
Oh, I heard you ask it. You say many have done it. I heard you. It ain't true.
You're done. They are done, Mr. Mays. Next speaker, please.
It's gonna be just no front yard. It's gonna be front and back. That's why them little gopher things live at. Be tripping me out. I know them little gophers and raccoons done ate up people's wires on their car. And when they eat the wires up and been in garages, that car expense is notorious because they chewing on the wires. You ever heard of that?
Yeah, I've heard of it.
You say you heard of it.
I've got 13, like I caught 13 groundhogs in my yard.
See what I'm saying?
So, yeah, I know what they can do.
And so all of that comes with what you talked about, blighted structures next door. I can show you next door to my house right now at 125 East Russell, the little hole they come out of at the Land Bank House. Which is right next door to me, and I be looking at them. I make noise and see them run back in. I'm thinking about putting some grapes or something out there to keep them over there. I don't know what they eat. Grapes, what they eat? Y'all know any of your staff know what they eat?
They eat my squash.
They eat your squash.
Out of my garden.
Well, I'm gonna plant them a squash garden and keep them over there. Because if they chew my wires, you don't make much as a council person. You think we make a lot? We don't.
Mr. Mays was calling colleagues foolish, then he began to speak about getting put out of meetings, totally going offensive left field when we are on a specific resolution dealing with the kind of...
What is your request, Mr. Mays?
Through you to Ms. Lewis, can I make, have my opinion that it's foolish to counsel meetings? We got business stacked up. Is that relevant? That part.
Proceed, Ms. Lewis.
I definitely do, because that was an improper request for information. So, as we move forward...
But because my colleague wants to identify and characterize us as whatever he think, and based on whatever he think, his ideology or what he think about us, we supposed to sit here and take it? And if we don't take it, we supposed to just be quiet, don't say nothing, and let him talk three minutes and let him make derogatory comments towards us and take it? Because our colleague or some of our colleagues think we should ought to take it, what some of us think.
No one changes their mind because of them.
Request for information. Through you to the Speaker, Ms. Worthing. If it's not professional to attack other members, why didn't you and Ms. Redell Lewis call a press conference and attack me?
Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays, you weren't recognized and then also pleased...
Point of order.
What's your point?
When you called a privileged motion, you said...
You did not give me an opportunity. You started speaking.
Okay, so now I know.
Just give me an opportunity. I was gonna recognize you.
Point of order. Now I know.
Mr. Mays, you have the floor.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, what's your point?
My point is if I do a privileged motion, why don't you recognize it immediately and then not come back and try to penalize me and say I wasn't recognized?
Mr. Mays, I'm chairing this meeting and I was about to recognize you, but you immediately began speaking. I would ask that all members give me the opportunity to recognize you. You will not be ignored. Your points will be recognized.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, what is your point?
I wanna see if that care is due throughout your championship with your other colleagues.
Point of order. Ms. Worthing, well, that's not a proper point of order. You just took the floor. Thank you, Ms. Worthing. All right, is there anyone else who would like to...
Press for meetings and they don't show up? Committee needs been canceled. Oh, you can't talk about that. That's not germane. You can't talk about that. I can talk about what I want when I'm trying to get million dollars worth of business done. I can talk about the 15 million I want increased for people to get roofs on their houses, vinyl siding, windows. I can talk about that. I'm not gonna jibble $94 million away, a million here, two million there. They putting me out. I gotta get with the staff and safety pay. What did they blow on while I was gone? I've been sitting here for 10 years.
Mr. Mays, I will request that you remain germane to Resolution 230.
I'll appeal the ruling of the chair. And I reckon that you're out of order.
I'm actually not out of order at any point in time. The chair can call you to order.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
It has been...
Your job is to ask point of order.
You are not chairing this meeting. What is your point, Mr. Mays?
Point of order.
What is your point, Mr. Mays?
Your job is to ask immediately, is there a second to the appeal? Yeah.
As I am the one chairing the meeting, is there a second to Mr. Mays' appeal?
I'll support his appeal.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly seconded by a Councilwoman in the fifth ward.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
When you interrupted me and I got the floor, I don't care what your colleagues say, you wrong. When I done my first ward project and millions of dollars in the procedure we going through, it's germane and relative, it might not be what you want to hear, but you better go ask the professor at U of M initiative state what germane mean. You better get a dictionary or Google it because you out of order. And I wanna give you a warning for doing that. You remind me of Redell Lewis. Y'all be out of order.
You recognized the Councilman in the third meeting.
I want to the public that's listening and watching this, I want y'all to see we in this amended motion, so I want y'all to watch how my colleague in the first ward does. He take the, when we do a regular motion, you get two rounds of five minutes. He take his first round of five minutes, then if we wanna talk, we can't talk because then he make a motion to do amended motion. When he do the amended motion, we only got one round of three minutes, so he use up his five minutes and then don't allow space for us to do our...
No, Madam Chair.
What is your point, Mr. Mays?
So if we can criticize me, I should criticize for y'all, correct?
Mr. Murphy?
Point of order.
What is your point?
My point is that it's like the fifth plus time that Mr. Mays have used a privileged motion to obtain the floor. And according to our council rules, that's in order for a warning. Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy, please proceed.
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk about the motion in the meeting. Something on the problem. So my, my point of order is according to our rules, a request for information is when someone is making a note to the Speaker to help them decide on the next vote. And what Councilwoman Worthing did was she gave information that helped decide on the matter at hand, so she was not out of order. Just wanted to clarify that because that was what Ms. Mays was saying initially.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I, however, did not understand that to be his... I think, I thought he was saying, asking if I recognized her and I was explaining to him, I did recognize her. I might not have said it loud enough. What is your point, Councilwoman Burns?
Actually, should be a point of order. I sit right here next to you. I did not hear you recognize her initially.
That's not...
Just straight up...
That is your first warning. That is your first warning. All right, and the next?
Point of order. Your job is to ask is there a second? Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Mays, what is your point?
I immediately appealed the decision of the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I support that.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly seconded by Councilwoman Burns. It's their discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mays?
He wasn't the only one that showed expression.
And that is your second warning?
Point of order. I'm gonna rule that a chair...
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal, Mr. Mays.
I have to do it immediately.
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal.
Point of order.
What is your point?
You gave him a second warning and I appealed immediately the decision of the chair.
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal.
I appeal. Yes, you can.
You cannot.
Point of order. You must do it immediately.
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal.
Any decision, under council rules, any decision of the chair can be appealed.
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal.
I appeal the ruling of the chair. Any decision of the chair can be appealed and it must be taken.
Officer Metcalf, he has been removed from the meeting.
Point of order.
He has been removed from the meeting, yes.
Point of order.
He is being disorderly. He has been removed, Officer Metcalf.
Point of order. Officer Metcalf giving a deal on that.
Yes, Councilwoman Barnes.
Thank you.
Point of order.
The person actually that think you're, we're at this point, I didn't even think it was that person. I actually thought it was Arielle.
No, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm...
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, it's an appeal of the floor.
Absolutely. And it's been, the first one has been properly seconded. We will move into your first.
And the second one is appealed.
You cannot appeal in the middle of an appeal.
I'm gonna cite the rule and say you can. You ready?
Okay, go ahead.
Under the council rules, I'm gonna read to you why.
Go ahead.
I appreciate your attention.
Let's face it.
City Attorney, could you please wait?
Sure. Rule 1.2 states generally as to appeals. It's roughly parallels, Roberts Rules of Order, Section 24, Title I. But Roberts Rules of Order, Section 24...
This to make does not have the floor to get out and get no one to be here for their law.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I understand, Mr. Mays. Attorney Kim, would you please continue?
You have to take the five and...
24, Roberts Rules of Order, 24.3 is...
Councilwoman Worthing should have several warnings already. And Councilwoman Worthing, I don't know why you parked in my parking space.
Councilwoman Whitfree Carter, please say...
Next time you park in my parking space, you gonna come downstairs to all flat, aren't you?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes the country woman in the second ward?
Thank you. This meeting is getting beyond out of hand. We have people administering threats, stabbing of tires. This is too much. And so, I mean, yeah, this is just too much. And I'm not gonna sit here and allow colleagues to...
Councilwoman Whitfree Carter, you do not have the floor. Please refrain from yelling out. What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
We have a number of an appeal.
The appeal is improper because, because what he's saying is not correct and...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point of order?
Did you warn her?
Mr. Mays and Ms. Lewis, as I've just previously stated, the appeal is improper. I never said those words. There's nothing to appeal. If Mr. Mays would like to proceed, this is his second warning.
Hey, uh, that look around.
The council is at ease.
It is a general lack of form.
I'm still here.
No, sir.
I am still here.
I'm at your seat.
We're at ease. We are at ease. We're still at ease. The council is at ease until more can be established.
It's a general lack of form. You can't make up no room. I'm not gonna be a cell. I don't wanna talk backwards.
I am right here.
But I give you, but you're not at your seat.
You ain't at your seat.
It's not at your seat.
And she ain't in her. And you trying to make up.
Council rules actually only require...
Y'all wanna play a game? Play the game.
No, 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 crazy. No, no, no.
And you gonna hit your neck with it. And she ain't in her. And you trying to make up.
Council rules actually only require...
Y'all wanna play a game? Play the game.
No, 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 crazy. No, no, no. Councilwoman Whitfree. And I'll... I got him. Who is that? I got him.
Talk about this here. Who is that? I'm not.
If y'all wanna be here, don't be here. Let's get us to work, boy.
Who is that?
Whoever the shooter is.
I'm not going to...
The Memphis, who's...
You not gonna know what you're saying.
A black dude is...
But you already got up.
I ain't hit him.
That was wrong. No. And now, Julie was down and she was wrong. So tell me, you're not just being lying. Just being lying. Girl, I don't even talk to you. I don't even talk to you. I don't even talk to you. Because...
Y'all wanna play the game both in a way. Play the game if you gonna be the gamesmanship.
Still diet. Not great.
Y'all slap on the back, it's all...
Y'all wanna be like...
Somebody go get Will Smith. What you doing? Tell him.
I got some nuts. All right, council will now come back to order. Council will now come back to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk. I would ask that the audience, please refrain from speaking out. Thank you. That will be your first warning as an audience member. All right, perfect. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
So I wanted, this resolution is from you. Resolution centering Councilwoman Tanya Burns conduct under coming up council member. Section 3-0, 3-103 is what you have the city attorney cite. Attorney Kim, I believe, here that night, spoke with him. And states on September 11th, Councilwoman Tanya Burns violated Rules of Dequorum by calling a fellow council member a witch. While on Monday, November 13th, Councilwoman Burns violated Rules of Dequorum by calling the chair for being rude and nasty, not a good person. Report was said to the chair, girl, shut up. I believe at that point. In addition, on September 14th, Councilwoman Burns violated Rule 27.2 by engaging in argument to discourse of a member of the audit. So here's what this gets down to. I did call you nasty, and I won't apologize for that because you sent a text message to the pastors stating, which I posted on my Facebook, which was a blatant lie and it was malicious. I have no point stated on anywhere on my public Facebook page, which you have the capability of seeing, that I say that on my Saturday show, I'm going to talk about Councilwoman LaDella was being a word. You sent the concerned pastors a fake text message. So yes, that was very nasty. You did that deliberately to attack my integrity and my care.
Ms. Burns, you brought up watching my son in my absence. You never have babysat my child. You're telling people that my marriage is a false, a farce. I've been with my husband 13 years and happy. You're telling people you know how I get down. Well, if you do know, if you know it like me. This is why we're giving you this sentence. Then you left the meeting yelling out, girl, shut up, girl, shut up, girl, shut up. I'm not a girl and you don't tell me to shut up. I'm Madam Chair when I'm in this seat. And because that reason, this is why you have a sentence.
Y'all need to stop this.
Report information.
I'm not gonna deny, deny.
That's not an option. So, then you...
Can you stop my time?
Yeah, that's fine. But then you say at the last meeting, when I made the statement, you said that you watched my son jump in the pool and my son was scared of water.
I did not say he was scared of water. Madam Chair, you're taking the floor.
That's not what I'm saying.
You're taking the floor. No, I'm reclaiming my time.
Ms. Burns, that is fine. That, Ms. Burns, you doing what you do, so that is fine.
You're taking the floor.
Please, Ms. Burns, please go ahead.
You're doing what you... I have the floor, not you. And let me tell you, so if this is y'all opportunity, I couldn't care less. Because once my little minute is up and done with, then I'm going home. But y'all are some liars. Just lying. So if you talk crazy to me, I'm gonna talk crazy to you. That's just simply gonna happen. And y'all do some stuff that a lot of times I, I hold in a whole lot. I sit in my seat, the Councilwoman was machete, for you to just boldly tell that lie was done. I just can't believe that. Because he asked for my receipt. He asked for it and asked me to show the city attorney, and I did. And then you gonna say I was arguing. He said my perfectly manicured fingernails. I hadn't had a feeling in six, seven weeks. When I got to get my nails, she said, Tony, you wait too long. You shouldn't wait so long. My fingernails weren't perfectly manicured, needed a feeling really bad. So I mean, the stuff that y'all do, look, have you paying the report? I'm going home and do whatever y'all need to do. But this foolishness, y'all need to stop. What the hell, yeah, you sent the bogus text message and you shouldn't have. And shame on you. Shame on you. You shouldn't have did that. And you sent it to the pastors. Have a blessed night. I'm going home.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Machete.
Yes, so, as my colleague packs up, running from the truth that she often does... Yes, so, as my colleague packs up, running from the truth like she often does, it evades her, let it, let it, let it hug you, baby, let the truth hug you. Because first of all, I'm arguing, I have the floor, you do not, as I was saying, I did not make up any lie. Mr. Matthews stated what happened to him. You cannot go into an audience member's space and point your finger, feel happy when you want. Furthermore, the whole, you don't have the floor, the whole, I said, oh, you leave aside us, that somebody was a slithering snake, so not so, so not so. But it's amazing how it's, oh, you did say it off the mic, no, I said what I said, and I said it on the mic. I have no problems repeating what I'm saying, I have no type of problem with being truthful, there is nothing that can happen to me for telling the truth. Uh, the person that has an interesting relationship with the truth is departing, because they cannot stand in who they are. And so, as I was saying, you are clearly walking out the door, baby, departing, so as I was saying.
Uh, Councilwoman Machet, for, for the record, Councilwoman Burns was just being disorderly, leaving, yelling out, didn't have the floor, please proceed.
The very reason why she is being censored.
So with that being said, we're gonna call for the vote to warn Councilwoman Tanya Burns. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Votes five, yes, zero, no, that resolution number one has passed. Ms. Wilson.
I wanna see if I can ask to do something a little different here. As I get ready to propose moving these appointments as an agenda to council, I wanna see if I can do this. Look what we did, Mr. Metcalf, we had a good meeting and took care of some business. Can I do this, Madam Chair? Can we clap for us and the people for once in our life and tell people we had a, the meeting ain't over yet, but we had to do this.
So far.
Glad somebody heard that.